All right. Welcome, everyone.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item on the agenda, approved minutes from the June 9th, 2025 regular meeting.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from the June 9th meeting of the Board of Education.
One second.
Any discussion? All right, let's take a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any extensions? Nope. You know us. Next on the agenda, additions to agenda.
No, I'm gonna make a motion to move something.
Yeah, we can all do that. Lynn has a, you want to do a motion to change?
I sure will.
Modify the agenda?
I would like to modify the agenda in the following way. I'd like to take item number nine, recommended actions, where it's possible, and move that before the executive sessions. And I think that would be 9A, 9B, and 9C. Yes. Right? And then we'll have to save 9D and E for after the executive session. So those, what's currently 9A, B, and C will now be moved to after committee reports.
It would be after comments from visitors.
Comments, okay, after comments from visitors, okay. Thank you. I need a second.
That's good. You have a second?
Second.
Second.
Lisa with the second, I think. Snuck it in there.
Cass can do a second.
Any discussion? So we're just moving that, so if anybody wants to see those actions before we go into executive session. So I'll take a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I think that was all. You know us. Next item on the agenda, comments from visitors regarding agenda items. Welcome, everybody. Anybody have any comments on the agenda? Nope. Okay. And we'll move on to the chairperson's report. Bob is on vacation, I believe, so I am acting chair tonight. So I'll see if I can get through this. Since our last, at the last meeting, we did hire a new director of student support services, the C. Bull updated formally on that on her report, but just wanted to take the time and thank Karen for tremendous 25 years of experience. Beautiful person, great worker, hopefully the new person who's got some very big shoes to fill. We're gonna miss her drastically, a lot. She has done things for pretty much, I know there was a few people on the board previously, it was myself, she's helped one of my children already. Just amazing person and individual, and we're gonna miss her drastically. So congratulations to her, and hopefully we get to celebrate her in a few weeks. Item number three, superintendent's report.
Okay, good evening, everyone. Item 3A, we're going to start with the update on year-end financials. I'll ask our business manager, Mrs. Heine, to speak to that, please.
Good morning, everybody. Evening, yes. So we did receive the excess cost grant, which we talked about, we received all our funds as of June 30th, they've all been recorded in the financial statements. We received our reimbursements from our other districts too that have been recorded in the financials. Just letting you know, the financials are preliminary that I sent you, we're still working on the encumbrances. So we have, in your pack, you can see some of the numbers, the same things are over as they were last month, nothing's really changed. Just going forward, I'm hoping by the end of August to have, well, actually by the end of this month, middle of August, we'll have better numbers. We're still working on the encumbrances to make sure that we have them all in, because once we close our books and put in our annual reports, kind of hard change. So we're still working on finalizing those and verifying that the rest of the encumbrances are there, and we will, at the next meeting, we can talk about what to do with the overage. Any questions?
Item 3B, elementary school student enrollment update. This is something we do several times, beginning in the spring, up and through, we actually open up our school days, this is just to be sure that our class size, you know, guidelines are followed, and, you know, there's been a lot of conversation about some new builds in town and what impact that might have, so we've been keeping a very close eye on that as well. So the, you have it in your packets, the current enrollment is actually fairly similar than it was the last time, which was in March. We continue to trend at our policy guideline number for grades 2, 3, 4, 5, where we have three sections in each of those classrooms. I'm sorry, three sections in each of those grades. I will do another update for August. It's not unusual to get a little bit of a burst, you know, right before school with enrollment, particularly in the younger grades, and if we have families that are moving in, sometimes it is not done immediately, so I will keep an eye on that. I have contacted the Grand as well. I call them, I won't say regularly, but often enough to kind of keep an eye on how many of their units have been rented, so. Any questions about our enrollment? Yes, Mr. Walsh?
Are we thinking that we are gonna meet the same number of students in grades K and 1?
I'm sorry, I-
Do you, are we projecting, obviously we're not projecting on what I'm looking at, but are you feeling that the number of students in kindergarten and grade 1 will be similar to last year when we had the four sections? Because right now, if I do the math on grade 1, we're significantly, you know, if that's a real number, 55, and policy guideline's 20, that says 3 to me, not 4. Now, obviously, I support 4, because I do feel that 20 might be high, but our policy guideline is 20.
Yes, but that's a good common observation. I spoke with Mr. McGrath, the school principal, around it as well. We have, this is the same kind of discussion we had last year, do we look at three sections for grade 1? Do we move and keep the three sections where we have in grade 2? And we felt that grade 2, the students are a little bit more independent, and that was a better grade, and it is a, there is one student more per policy guideline. We also have, we do have a high number of students with special needs that are coming into kindergarten and first grade next year, which also helped us to keep the decision where it is.
And you're comfortable with going from last year, grade 1, sections averaging 15, to in their second grade, this year, there'll be 20, 21 students in the classroom?
I would prefer four sections.
Yeah, no, but I'm just, the question again, are we comfortable based on the, on the students that are going to be in that grade level?
I prefer four sections. However, based on the student needs, it is certainly, impact last year, you know, I did speak to our grade 2 teachers, who've been, some of them have been teaching grade 2, you know, for a very long time, and some people might think, it's not a big difference, two or three children, you know, a class, but, you know, sometimes it is. However, the need for individual students definitely are in the grade 1 bubble, and we should be, we should be good with the supports we have in place with grade 2.
Okay. Again, it's right now within the guidelines.
It is.
I just question that, going from relatively smaller sections last year, and picking up four or five kids in a class, a section.
Any other questions or comments for student enrollment? And going down to three sections for grade 2 occurred last year, prior to that, we were pretty steady with four sections for several years.
I did one more. Could we physically do that?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. We do have one classroom, if I'm remembering correctly. Item 3C, personnel update. I'm happy to share that we have three new hires for the beginning of this next school year. As mentioned by Vice Chairperson Borts, Mr. Joshua Martin will be, has been hired as our Director of Student Support Services. He will begin officially on August 11th. He has been in several times to speak with Ms. Gogel, Ms. Matera, actually the union as well, to get information, so he's definitely hitting the ground running. He comes from East Tatum, which is a very similar district to ours, so he's very familiar with the work, and he's very excited to start. And Chairperson, Vice Chairperson Borts, thank you so much for the shout out to Ms. Gogel. Anybody in this district who's been here for 25 years in some way, shape, or form probably has contact with Mrs. Gogel, and there's just not enough ways to say how much that we've appreciated her. And my guess is she's probably the longest-running Director of Student Support Services in the state. I haven't actually confirmed that, but I'm willing to bet that that's the case, so we wish her well between Maine and New York, where she'll visit, hopefully for longer stays for her grandchildren. We also have hired two paraprofessionals, Samantha Olson is one, and also Rebecca Williams is the second. And we are fully staffed, however, we are always looking for additional paraprofessionals, so I do think we still have some slots open for paraprofessionals. However, all of our certified staff is hiring in place. Item 3D, girls' golf. I'd like to ask Principal DeMello to speak to this topic, please.
Can you hear this thing?
No.
I stand without a left turn in like a month and a half.
You didn't wear your tie.
No. It's not bow tie Thursdays, so it's okay.
I'm prepping you for convocation.
Good evening, everyone. I am here on behalf of East Grand Bay High School and Athletic Director Kathy Dias, myself, and our girls that are interested in playing golf next year, have their own team. So really, what it comes down to, very simply put, is our interest in girls' golf has been getting larger every year. We started off very small, four, five years ago, and then we've added 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, and as you can see now, we have five in the back row, and there are a couple more that are interested, that are not here today, but also interested in playing or have played, and there are some in the pipeline coming up that would also like to continue playing. The last couple of years, they've been sharing the team with the boys' team, we never officially had an official girls' dedicated golf team, and we, the high school, the athletic director myself in the high school on behalf of the girls that are currently playing, that are going to play or want to play in the future, would like to ask for a girls' golf team. We do feel that the numbers will be or are sustainable over the next two, three, to four years. The legwork has been done to identify ball costs, and dependent on the approval from the board, we already have a grant lined up that we could use through the CIAC to basically supplement year one for greens fees, the key, oh, key, I shouldn't mean the key, didn't know that, transportation, and coaching. Yeah, range fees, balls, coaching, uniforms, transportation, et cetera. So we have a grant lined up through the CIAC. If the board is okay with approving the girls' team, based off your decision, we'll be able to put that grant in as soon as possible, the application as soon as possible, to see where we fall in receiving it. We, as a school, the principal, on behalf of Ms. Dias, recommend that the Board of Ed discuss and approve later in the meeting, the girls, the dedicated girls' golf.
For spring 2026.
For spring 2026.
Thank you. Do you want to have any questions?
Shouldn't we wait till we discuss? Get down below?
For a discussion?
Yeah.
Yeah. Sure. Thank you.
Unless we have questions. Bye, you're back.
Thank you, Principal DeMello.
All set?
Yes.
Item 4, committee reports, policy.
We have the Facebook page, Board Bylaw, first read, it's attached to this packet of information that we received. Just wanted to know if anybody had any questions or concerns on that.
And it being the first read, it certainly will come up on the agenda, you know, next month as well.
Anything else for policy?
Yeah, the, sorry, I just lost my agenda. We have the climate culture, this is not a first read, is that right?
I can explain a little bit?
Okay. Absolutely. I have to do. So thank you.
So the state of Connecticut has, is requiring, it's actually a mandated policy, school climate policy that comes into effect with this next coming school year. So Principal DeMello is prepared to give a little bit of a summary on that. It does require particular positions that are designated through the superintendent and supported by the board. One is the coordinator, and that is the role that Mr. DeMello will hold, as well as climate specialists, which will be our school principals, and then there will be a school climate committee that will be established in each of the buildings. This language, so Mr. DeMello, tell me if I'm overstepping, actually comes through CAE, which is the Connecticut Association of Boards of Education, really for us to adopt. So there's been very little language that we needed to work through, and is a CAE, you know, mandated policy.
Correct.
Anything I didn't?
No. So Public Act 23167 was passed in 2023, and it basically dictated over the next couple of years, meaning up until 2025. Right now, the expectation was schools need, or districts needed to approve, need to approve the policy that the committee's talking about, and CAE was tasked in writing it, they finished writing it last year, basically gave it to districts to pass and approve, and then, once the district passes and approves that policy, then the district can kind of go with the rest of the steps, assigning a climate and culture specialist, and then the coordinator, coordinator specialists, and then the committees that go with it. And then with that, there are other obligations, basically practices that need to be developed based off of that, but we really can't begin, well, we can be, we were allowed to begin the pre-work up until this year, now it's mandated and expected, and that's part of the policy, is that it's expected that it's in, so that we can kind of keep taking the next steps that we're taking, including surveys, which many of the families, you probably already received in district, if you have a student in the community or in the district, you would have received a survey this past May, that was a school climate survey, and it asked us certain questions, which then allowed us to take next steps to build what we need to build for climate and culture inside of our individual buildings moving forward for practice next year.
There's a number of required trainings as well, which our staff has participated in. I think through this year, we've done a lot of it through some of our grant funding, and I think through this year, we'll have a better idea if there's additional kind of budget needs kind of moving forth, but we're actually a little bit ahead of the curve in, you know, many ways with, we had a whole team that went out this summer for restorative, restorative practices training, we will do a train-the-trainer model, you know, back in our district, so.
Yeah, like the superintendent said, excuse me, CAE was tasked with, by the state was tasked to write this policy, so we really can't manipulate the policy at all, because CAE's telling us what needs to be in it and what we need to follow.
Which is why you'll see it for a motion for approval at the end.
4B, budget, as a budget committee, we have not met since the last. Anything we want to add other than your business report already?
No.
Okay. Moving on to item C, curriculum.
I believe Mrs. White is making a presentation about three courses that are up for adoption.
Hi.
And may I interrupt for one second? Because what else, what a better way to spend your birthday than at a Board of Education meeting.
Happy birthday!
Thank you. That's true.
Bye, dear mom.
Bless me. We had some student requests to create classes in our district for, regarding medical, people, students who wanted to go into the medical field after graduation, adding business classes, and then an AP environmental class. So the ECE UConn class is a class where students can learn, earn credits that will be given to them and can be used at UConn as well as other Connecticut universities. To become an instructor for this, you have to have a certain level of degree as well as apply to UConn. So Laura Zinnan applied for the ECE medical terminology and was selected by UConn to teach that class, and then John Tedesco, the mathematics teacher, applied for ECE business math, and he was accepted. In both of those instances, you have to submit a syllabus, which the Board had received in the packet that Lisa Klein prepared for you, and then Jessie Quinn, our science teacher, had to go through the College Board to be approved for the AP environmental class, and that syllabus is also included in the packet. If these courses are approved, then they will start this fall, and students will be taking medical terminology, business mathematics, and AP environment. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you. Negotiations, committee has not met, but it is getting to be that time. We have a couple contracts coming up, so we'll start to schedule some meetings coming up in the future.
Be that time.
It is.
Yes, it is.
Facilities, we met this past week, a few topics were fields, we're looking at having, we're meeting with the select person this week on Wednesday to determine who's responsible, who's doing what already, so we don't overlap, looking at contracting an outside vendor such as Green Machine versus what EPW is already doing, so we just want to make sure we're not overlapping on things, just things like overseeding, fertilizing, now that we got the irrigation up and going, to keep the field looking nice, and bring them up to standards and keep them at standards. So that will be discussed with the town this week. We had an evaporator coil fail at the high school in one of the RTU units, and that got approved to replace. It was already within, we had a budget left for this year, so it was not too complicated. Weekend custodial needs, we've been having some issues with outside groups cleaning, leaving the place as they found it, so we're looking to, conjunction with other discussions, we're looking to do a fee schedule, update that, which will go through the policy committee first before we present it to the board, so we're gonna update the fee schedule, and that's to ensure we cover, kind of looking at a hybrid, if we can utilize our interior custodians, if they want to volunteer, if they want to pick up another job on the weekend, they can do that. If not, we'll use an outside service, but we're gonna find somehow to clean the auditorium, gymnasium, any classrooms that are used for large events, to keep it clean, so it's ready to go on Monday. So that is upcoming with that fee schedule as well. Tennis courts, we keep dumping money into them every year for repair, so we're gonna have to do a full evaluation to see the path moving forward, see if we need to just completely redo it, or what needs to be done, so that's upcoming. And that was about it for facilities. Communications, or any questions on facility stuff before I move on? Communications?
I have a soul member here. We, there's policy being put forward that has already gone through the policy committee about the creation of an official Board of Education Facebook page, and all of those purposes are covered in the policy there, and to let the board know that we've been working with Steve Moser in creating that page, being tied to the already existing school platform for news and information that's there, so the objective is to just create another door for people to access that information from the Facebook platform that they might already be using, not to be distributing new information or making any statements, but just giving another pathway by which people can get that school-related information. So nothing will be posted or created upon of that until it has been presented, all the drafts have been created and presented to the board for approval before they would be posted. So the next step in that is to approve the policy that has been crafted within the policy committee. Okay? Tonight? This is the first read, so we're not approving it yet. So we're first reading.
I just have another note for Policy Committee.
Okay.
So just have another note for Policy Committee, we are trying to get together to continue our work, looking over the Shipman and Goodwin, Shipman and Goodwin policies. We've gotten, we've been, gone through most of them, but we still need to get through some final policies, so I was thinking, probably as early as next week, I'll send out some of the dates for the committee, for us to meet, so we can do that. Does that work for you?
Unfortunately, yes.
Great, very good, that's it. Thanks.
Moving on to item 5, agenda items for future meetings.
Elementary student enrollment? We'll do the second read for the East Grand Bay Board of Ed Facebook.
Second, yep.
There was a question about establishing the graduation date, that was-
Yeah, not, not on a Friday, didn't we? Did we ever do it on a Friday?
No, I don't think so.
I think that standard practice to not happen on a Friday.
This year, it happens to fall on a Friday.
Graduate, the last day?
Last day.
Last day of school.
We always graduate before the last day of school, right?
There was a change in the law about three years ago that has allowed us to establish the date much earlier than we used to, so usually we speak with some of the parents who are running Project Graduation to kind of work with them so that it works for all. I think one year, it actually was favorable for Friday, so it's really dependent, but I, if that was an email, I did not receive that, so I'm unaware of that request.
Gotcha, I think it was just addressed to board members, so I wasn't sure if anybody had already had that discussion. So that is a concern of parents about not having it on that Friday, so I don't know at what point we set that particular date on the calendar, that is, obviously, they need to be starting doing their planning, I think they have the first planning meeting on Thursday night of this. I'm not sure if there's anybody here that's part of that.
I think, I think if you, if we aim for like September, October discussion, I think is when it happened last year.
We've approved that act over the last couple of years.
Yeah. It's only been recently that we've been approving it, early.
So that would be something for a future.
Put them out of use and say, it won't be on a Friday, though, but we can get the official date.
Just for reference, it was, it was sent on July 21st.
The email.
The email came from Amber Russo. That's what it said.
Okay, we'll put that on future agenda for graduation.
All right, item 6, comments from visitors.
Well, I won't be shy. Everyone knows me. Hi, Mr. DeMello. How are you?
Good.
So as you all know, I am Amanda Copeland, the CEO of Cat Copeland. I'd like to thank the board for having us, Mr. DeMello. Thank you. Mrs. Diaz, Diaz, thank you. I'm here representing the girls' golf team. As you can see, they're back there, you can just stand, just, ladies, ladies, all wearing their uniforms here, proud, they've all been practicing all summer long. I just want to say that golf is the closest game to the game of life. Golf is much as a mental game as it is a physical. Golf is much as a mental game as it is a physical game. They learn to manage their stress, maintain focus, stay positive, even through challenging rounds. So I ask the board to please allow these young ladies their own team so they can continue to build the strength in these lifetime sport. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments, visitors?
Hi, Dustin Copeland. I would like to say that in addition to what Mrs. Copeland said, the other factor that we are all considering is the opportunities that you could have with golf. There are a lot of golf scholarships that are out there that are available, and unfortunately with girls competing with boys, we all know that it's physically difficult. And by kind of shortchanging them in those opportunities, they're, they're just, they're not getting the same opportunities as the boys are getting. So I'd like to have everybody, you know, just consider that and their thoughts for approval of that same topic.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Kevin Clemens. I initiated the conversation when I was coaching eighth grade basketball and the previous athletic director and the correspondence. And it seemed like we were heading in a positive direction when they were freshmen. And then it didn't come into fruition. I volunteered to coach. If it was, resources were the problem, I understand, I work for municipality, I understand budgets, I understand everything associated with that. So when it didn't go through, you know, he was apologetic. And then I thought for sure we were good for last year. You know, I met with Miss Diaz, a lot of the girls were playing soccer in August or whatever, and it seemed like she was already initiating it, but it didn't come into play. So, you know, to what they're saying, I couldn't agree more. We're out there as a family now, you know, and it continues and continues, and they'll be doing it with their kids. The, it's, with, with the way that sports seems like, when I was a kid, I played three sports, like soccer, basketball, baseball. Seems like now that specialty sports are just, you know, they're just focusing on one sport. And if you're not in AAU or one of these elite soccer programs, it's, it's hard to find your niche as a team. Golf, you don't have to be the strongest person, you don't have, you don't have to be the fastest person, you don't have to be the most athletic, it's just something, if you get technique, you can really build on it and enjoy it. There's, I'm sure that it's going to be strong for years to come, and I appreciate the support from the board.
Thank you. Any other comments from visitors? All right, thank you. Moving on with the modified agenda, we're going to skip to new item seven, recommended actions. Item A, approve girls' golf team for spring 2026.
I'll make a motion to start discussion to approve the girls' golf team for spring 2026.
A second.
Second. Any discussion?
Yeah, I just had, I had a couple of questions, and I think Tony you could answer them, maybe? Or maybe one of the Copelands is it, can answer it? So you said last year, I don't recall it coming to us last year, and then I don't recall it coming to us, maybe it was discussed during budget, I might have missed that. But this year we have how many young ladies that are playing golf, Tony? And I know they're playing on the, on the young men's team.
Eight.
Eight, and then...
This past spring we had.
Were there players in 2024 in spring?
There were nine in 2024.
Young ladies? And how many players would be on the girls' team?
You can have as many players as you want.
On the team, yeah.
Four, four to five play.
They're each for a minimum, the whole team.
Four.
They go out individually?
They go out as a team.
No, I'm sorry, they go out against Grand B, they go out against Stafford, they go out one-on-one. They play four?
That's correct, it's an individual.
Is it four players?
They go out as a foursome, however, it's, you know, there'd be two Grand B kids, two East Grand B kids, and they're, they compete against each other.
And there's four players that are out there to score.
There's five, and then, and then actually, there's an alternate, a sixth.
They get to play their ball?
They, they play, because that makes it, so there's three T times 12 people, six from each school.
Okay.
And five of the matches count for the, for the event that day.
Top five players for each team?
Not necessarily, it's a coach's decision.
Okay, I got you. So, so five are slotted into foursomes, and then...
Six matches are slotted into foursomes, five who are competitive.
Okay, so there's one that's designated. I get it, yeah, that's good. And then, where I'm going with it is, you know, is this something we could do, is it no cut?
Yes.
Yeah. And what would that do to young men's, with boys golf? What would that do?
Do anything.
They still have the same interest and have always had that same interest?
Yeah, I mean, the boys, the boys been averaging eight, average eight boys since 2018.
And they're no cut too?
Boys on the team give her, you know, upper...
And it was no cut, it was, so it was no cut this year?
There were.
There were cuts.
Yeah, but it was only because we have one coach coaching 16, 17 student athletes.
Yeah, that sounds scary. Okay.
The boys and girls matches are at the same, same course, like?
That I'm not sure about.
Are they the same course, same day, or they say?
They would play on different days.
Okay, I wasn't sure if it was like one of the shared course things.
And it's all through the...
CIAC.
Now I know, but it's through the conference?
It is.
Are there others, you know?
Like tournaments?
A fair amount, fair amount of school in our conference that are playing.
Conference play.
Or is it type?
I think they're currently...
I mean, you can always find others, other schools go out of conference, I'm sure, but just curious if there's...
Kathy did pull that out, but I don't remember if it's on my list. I think there are at least four other schools in our conference that have.
They have.
Yes.
And then you said something about a grant?
Yes, so the CIAC has a grant which we applied for a couple of years ago, and we've hit the point where we can apply for it again. It is called the... Sorry, I have girls' rules here too. It's called the J. Robert Ford Athletic Grant Program, and it, you can ask for the maximum amount of $5,000. And that's if you want to create a team, or to supplement cost of a bigger picture.
To create a team?
And that falls under.
And supplement the cost. So, you know, what's, what's the current cost of district?
It would be...
I'm sorry, of the existing team?
If we were to put a team together without just having a cost statistic, it would be about $7,900. Yeah.
Assuming we could find enough matches and, and then cost to go, hopefully, tournament stage, whatever.
Yes. I'm not, I'm comfortable in saying that we wouldn't be at a loss for matches. There's plenty of teams out there, even if the travel might be a little bit further, you know, they may, the schools may have to come to us from a further distance, or we may have to go further to play other schools that might have been in our conference to satisfy the minimum amount of matches that you need in order to qualify for the girls' tournament.
And this would allow them to play against only other girls, as opposed to a co-ed team?
Yes, other girls' teams. Yeah.
I've observed our young ladies in action on the golf course. They're courteous and polite, and their language is fine. And if their language isn't fine, you'll hear from me.
I'm glad you were not observing me when I play, because my language is not fine, as demonstrated on Saturday, which I may have thrown my club.
Just don't play any screaming. Just don't play any screaming.
Any other comments?
So basically, the, the cost that you put together is $7,900, and the hope is to get a $5,000 grant towards the first year. And that's a non-regularly grant, right, because it's to establish a team? Okay.
And we have numbers for sustainability over the next few years?
Yes.
You already mentioned that, so that was my concern. Any other questions? Anybody?
Hello?
All right, well.
I have a second. There was no second? I believe I do have a second.
Lynn?
Yeah, Lynn's second.
Yep.
Thank you, Ms. Klein.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
John, was that a aye? Carrie Dean Anderson.
Congratulations.
All right, I think we're at nine, I think we moved this to seven now. 7B, approve Connecticut School Climate Policy 5006.
Are we doing that, or is this a first read?
I, I put it on for an approval.
We don't really have a first, second read since it wasn't through our committee?
Correct.
So, I just want to understand, well, should we do the motion first, and then we can discuss?
Yes.
Yeah.
I move that we discuss approval of the Connecticut School of Climate Policy 5006.
Can I leave that? Discussion?
Am I understanding correctly that we have to approve this?
It's a mandated policy.
Okay, so yes.
I mean, you can't, you can't, you can't hold it until the next...
The 25 pages is preliminaries.
Can't revise, yeah.
Yeah, so basically what it's doing, it's taking over the one that was already in our, and in the district's handbook. Like it, there was a whole, all of the bullying and harassment and all of that was, all fell under the school climate piece. They just tightened it up, they changed a lot of the language. It's no longer, it's no longer like bullying, it's challenging behavior, and every district has to set up specifics to go with that.
There is a reference in the shipment policy to the new.
I think to make it...
To the CAVE policy.
To make it very strategically systematically lined up so that every district is doing everything sort of the same. CAVE, they, CAVE was tasked to write it for everyone.
And the 5006 is in sequence?
It.
It's...
Yes, it is in sequence, I don't have the document in front of me.
No, but it would be...
What we can do is approve the school climate policy without the number following it.
That could probably be approved.
Yep.
You want to add anything?
Sure. I move to approve the Connecticut School Climate Policy without the number 5006 behind it.
A second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion, Carrie Dean Anderson.
Thank you.
All right. Item C, approve ECE Medical Terminology, ECE Business Math, AP Environmental Curriculum.
So moved.
Second.
Oh, let's give it to Mark this time. He's been fighting for that second all night. All right, discussion?
I don't think so, but we're not replacing anything?
Correct.
These are all...
Additional curriculum.
If, if I can clarify that we're not, this should not impact our FTEs?
That's correct.
Because we will be almost swapping like certain sections for another. Yep.
Any other questions, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Yes. Sorry, I was asking a question remotely.
All right, and that is all for recommended actions. Now we are going to, can I get a move? Somebody like, I think we need a move, movement to, a motion to move into executive session.
I'll move to, move into executive session to talk, discuss the superintendent's contract for 2025, 2026.
Second?
And I guess, go, Graham?
Would you like to invite me?
Yes, I would like to invite you, and I would like to invite Missy, thank you. Missy before.
All right, can I get a second?
Second.
All right, we're going to move into executive session. Thank you guys all for coming.
Thank you very much, everybody.
And then we'll resume, we need to do both?
Thank you.
Bye, everybody. So let me also move, I've lost my agenda, can I claim this right now? So I would like to move to also move into executive session for the business managers' 2026, 2027 contracts. Am I inviting anybody?
Mary's okay with doing executive session without her, I had a conversation with her.
Okay, Mary, we will not darken your doorstep with that. All right, so I move on that, can I get a second?
I'm sorry, it has two business.
Yeah, the business managers' contract. We're moving to executive session for these two.
You can do both contracts.
Mary does not want to come in.
In one executive session instead of two, got it, so you're not going to go out in the back here?
You're right.
Okay, gotcha.
And we're inviting the superintendent to vote.
There's a topic.
Yes.
Just limit the first and the second, inviting both.
And you've been invited.
Yes, okay, and now we need to vote. To move into an executive session for the business person's contract too.
I forget if we need to vote to move.
Let's just vote though, why not?
Just move into executive.
Aye.
Second, aye.
Aye.
All in favor? Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Demello.
Welcome. You have my executive session and return normal meeting at 8:28. And we'll continue on to recommended action. Item D, approve contract for 2025, 2026. I have a question.
I move to authorize the chairperson to enter a contract with Superintendent Bavaro Grande for the contract year 2025, 2026.
Have a second?
Second.
Second, Mark, any discussion?
I just need to write this down.
Discussion, all in favor? Aye. Passed unanimously.
Thank you.
Moving on to item E, approve business managers' 2026 and 2027 contracts.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion authorizing the superintendent to enter into a two-year contract with the business manager under terms discussed in executive session.
Have a second?
Second.
Second by Lisa, all in favor? Any discussion, sorry? No? Any, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Passed unanimously. And that is all.
Do you have a first, a second? No spirit there, man. I will second Mark's motion to adjourn.
First, um, for the second.
Did you second my motion?
For both.
It was Lisa.
Lisa seconded my motion.
For John.
I seconded.
The first motion, Lisa, John?
Lynn.
The first motion was Lynn.
Lynn and Mark.
Lynn, Mark. Nope, sorry, I got the wrong name in there, Mark.
It's John, and then Lisa.
Are you writing this down, because I was too?
Okay, I wasn't.
So will you work with Lisa tomorrow on our two sheets of paper?
Yes.
All right, and that means we will adjourn at 8:30.
Thank you, everybody. It's formed it.
Sorry, can I get a motion for a German?
Uh, so move.
You did, went through that.
Move, I seconded.
Meeting first, second.
Mark was all over.
Vote for German.
Yes, yes.
All in favor, say aye.
Who's first and second?
Uh, it was Mark, Lisa.
German.